Call to order of the Newport Beach Planning Commission, Monday, July 11th, 2016. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
All Commissioners present.
Election of Officers. This is the time for the election of the Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. Nominations do not require a second, and a majority vote is required to elect. If there is more than one nomination, the voting will be done by paper ballot and the results read at the conclusion of the balloting. If there is only one nomination, the voting will be done using the electronic voting equipment. Nominations are now open. Do I hear any nominations?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hillgren, go ahead.
Let me start by welcoming Commissioner Dunlap to the team. Good to have you onboard. Welcome. Second, I'd like to commend our Chair for a great job he did this past year, leading us through some pretty active items. And so, heart of my motion is to recommend that Corey Kramer be our Chair again this coming year, given the types of projects that are already in process. I think your continued guidance, leadership is warranted. I'd recommend Commissioner Ketting as our Vice Chair and Commissioner Zack as our Secretary, and believe that we have probably the most solid commission that we've had as long as I've been here. So, that would be my motion.
Well, thank you very much. The double-edged sword, of course, having to do this another year, but I'm happy to do it. Is there a second? Second. Please vote.
Oh, you're going to hand vote for the elections?
Oh, hand vote, okay. All in favor, please raise your hand. Aye. Anyone opposed? None. Motion carries.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Great. Okay, so Brenda, take it away.
Yes, we have a few things to celebrate tonight. First of all, I want to welcome Commissioner Dunlap for her to join us, and also want to celebrate Chair Kramer's chair again, as well as his birthday. So, we're going to take a little break-
I didn't know why you were doing the celebration.
And we're going to take a little break and have cake in the bag. This is for two purposes, celebrate and also Jennifer wants to reorder the dais, so if there is any reordering of the seats, then we could do that this time.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to have the Vice Chair here and the Secretary here, so, and then beyond that, whatever, wherever people would want to sit is fine with me.
If you want to identify your seats, so Jennifer knows.
Pete, I guess he'll check over here.
Chair Kramer, if you want the public to know, we'll take a 10-minute recess.
Yeah, we'll take a 10-minute recess. Thank you. We are reconvening here. Next item is public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record and print your name on the blue forms provided at the podium.
Mr. Chairman, one second. We skipped item number two of item number one.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Appoint three Commissioners to the General Plan, LCP Committee. Chair to appoint one additional member and confirm or replace existing appointments. Existing appointments are myself, Peter Ketting, and Brad Hillgren. I would assume that we just keep the status quo on that unless one of you guys, okay. So, we'll just, the Chair reappoints. Next item is public comments. Mr. Mosher.
Chair Kramer and members of the Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. With or without the cake, the rearrangement of the officers seems like an appropriate time to speak about the importance of attendance by the Commissioners at the Planning Commission meetings and its impact on the appointment process. As all of you know, people apply to be on the Planning Commission, and those applications are reviewed by a three-member council nominating committee. This year, the committee consisted of the Mayor, the Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Petros, and they had 24 applications to consider, from which they were to select four names to present to the entire City Council. Of those four names, surprisingly, former Vice Chair Tim Brown was not one, and when asked why that was at the council meeting, Mayor Protem Muldoon said it was because Tim had missed nearly a quarter of the Planning Commission meetings during his tenure on Because of that, I reviewed the minutes from the 18 meetings that were held with the previous array of officers appointed last July, and of those 18, I was surprised to, well, perhaps not surprised. Unlike the City Council where attendance is very good, there were actually only two Planning Commissions where, meetings where, like tonight, the entire array of Planning Commissioners was there. And so, I wanted particularly to commend former Secretary and now Vice Chair Ketting and Commissioner Wigan for their outstanding attendance records. They missed only one of those 18 meetings, which I think the Council was saying indicated a real degree of dedication, beyond the dedication that all of you have to spend going through the reams of information in preparation for the meetings. But certainly from the public point of view, it is always disappointing to see only a few of the seats feel filled. So, I originally thought it was kind of a petty reason for not renominating somebody, but I've come to think that it is important, and ironically, I wanted to let you know that during the last year, actually Vice Chair Brown missed only three of the meetings, which put him in the upper half. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, request for continuances?
There are no requests this evening.
Okay. Consent item number two is minutes of June 23rd, 2016. I made some red line modifications that were circulated. I know Mr. Mosher had some as well. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I've got one comment.
Yeah.
There's some comments on page 7 of 9 related to, my saying was difficult to tell, related to the floor plans, layouts of the units without the floor plans, and I know that the floor plans were part of the package, but there were not layouts of the units themselves, and that was, to me, the key issue that was missing. So, I just want to make sure that next time we get a set of plans for that project, we actually get floor plans for the units.
Okay. So, staff can take note of that. Any other items? Is there a motion? Motion for approval. Is there a second? Second, and that motion includes the modifications, correct?
Correct.
By Chair Kramer and Mr. Mosher.
That is correct.
Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. It probably should show for Commissioner Dunlap and its abstention instead of voting in favor. Okay. Public hearing items. Item number three is the Cannery, PA 2015-201. I'm not clear why this matters before the Planning Commission, given that it was going to be approved by the zoning administrator a few weeks ago, so, and staff report was silent on that. So, if you could provide some rationale on why we're hearing it tonight, would be helpful.
I'd be happy to. As was stated in public comments, as well as Chair Kramer, this item was originally processed as a staff approval, in that the staff approval was determined that the project was substantial conformance with a previous use permit. And substantial conformance looks at making sure the square footage is the same and the general dining area was the same size. However, upon the Director's review of the staff approval, it was determined that there was indeed an operational change in the, of the business, because the business was operationally changing from a large area being restaurant into it being a bar. So, the Director requested that the item be brought to the Planning Commission for that, so that the public can have further review and for it to be more open to the public if they have any comments. The peninsula is a sensitive area, so we have had a higher level of review for projects such as this in this area.
Okay. Do you have a staff report?
Yes.
Go ahead.
All right. So, real briefly, the Cannery is an existing restaurant. It's located on the Elbow Peninsula in a mixed-use district. There's an offsite parking lot located-
Clark, it's not coming up on our video screens. Okay. I didn't get it. Over here, yeah. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, the Cannery is a restaurant on the peninsula. It's located in a mixed-use district surrounded by residential to the north and east and mixed-use to the south and west. There's an offsite parking lot located to the west. It's outlined in yellow there. So, the Cannery is an existing restaurant that has been around since about the early 1970s. It operates under an existing use permit, UP 1521, that essentially authorized the restaurant use and the offsite parking lot. In 2003, they received an approval of outdoor patio expansion, which authorized up to 57 seats outdoors. That did not affect any of the interior space. So, the proposal today is really limited to the interior at the first floor. They're proposing to convert 249 square feet of dining area to a bar area. This will result in a loss of 95 square feet in terms of the net public area at the first floor. They're going to reduce their seat count from 273 to 272 overall. They will have 44 seats outdoors, which is less than the 57 allowed originally, and they have no late hours. They currently open as late, or as early as 11:00 AM and close as late as 10:30 PM at night. So, this is a floor plan, first floor plan. The left side is the existing. The tan is the, basically, the net public area inside, and the purple's the net public area outside. To the right, you can see in the orange that that is the area affected as part of this operational change. They're going to convert the dining area to this bar area. There's going to be 20 seats overall dedicated to the bar area. There's two small tables and other chairs. And then they will relocate some of the interior seating to the outdoors, is kind of how that increase will occur there. So, this table breaks down the net public area and the seat count and the change. So, there's no change to the second floor or the patio, but there is a change to the first floor. The net public area goes down 95 square feet, as I mentioned, and the total seating drops from 273 to 272. So, just in summary, the essential change is the 249 square feet at the first floor, that dining area. There's no change to the existing ABC licenses, no change to the parking requirements, no change to the occupancy. They will close by 11:00 PM daily at the latest, and then we have incorporated conditions of approval that were included in the original use permit and outdoor dining permit as part of the draft resolution to try and clean that up into one document. The police department has also provided conditions of approval that we've incorporated. They have indicated that they are not in opposition to this project. We're recommending that you approve conditional use permit, UP 2016-032, superseding those two previous approvals. Representatives from the Cannery are here to answer any questions, as I am as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff from the Commission? Commissioner Ketting?
Yes, I had a question. I walked the space today and had the plans with the General Manager, and it's logical improvement in that area. How is the parking calculated? Is it based on number of seats or square footage of public use area, like most restaurants?
Based on a seat count, so it's essentially one space per three seats.
So, let's put up the floor plan today and propose again.
Can you repeat that?
Put up the, yeah, the color floor, right there. I think it's a logical improvement to that lower first floor area, but I was just curious. There's a lot more seats outside today. I counted 75 in people having lunch out there. How does that work?
They are proposing 44 outside, so they have an outdoor dining permit that authorized up to 57 seats. They should not exceed that, and this is what they've proposed, and we'll be providing this count.
So, the 57 calculates into the parking ratios, and that's why they have the two lots, correct?
Portions of the seating does account for the, is counted into the parking requirement, yes.
All right. And then, that's fine. I'll ask the applicant.
Commissioner Dunlap?
I just have a quick question, Jason. Under the background in the project description, it lists all the hours of operation, and at that point, it was 10:00 PM. And then, in your first part of your presentation, I think you mentioned 10:30, and then, on what I have on my screen here and down at the bottom of page five, it says 11:00. So, I'm just trying to clear, it's 11:00 PM is the-
Yeah, the 11:00 PM is provided for flexibility. I did misspeak when I said 10:30. They do close by 10:00. There's a condition, though, that stipulates their outdoor dining can stay open until 10:30 from the original approval, and that is included in the draft resolution. So, in order to clean that up, the outdoor dining hours, as well as the indoor, we've provided a period between 9:00 and 11:00 for their hours as flexibility, essentially.
They're not asking for any change in their hours as part of this-
They're not.
Proposal.
A condition's been provided to make that clear up front, what the hours allowed are.
Okay. Thank you.
Why 11:00 and not say 12:00 midnight? Seems like I've been there, I mean, I've been there many, many times, so. Only one drink in at that point, right?
That could be a question for the applicant, but it sounds like under today's operations, they close as early as 10:00, and as you know, a later hour beyond 11:00 does require the operator's license. So, they might have chosen just to maintain 11:00 hours, since that currently is not later than what they already do.
Yeah, I'd be curious to hear from the applicant on that. Any other questions of staff before we open the public hearing?
Real quick, Jason, you're cleaning up a bunch of old conditional use permits, et cetera. So, they will all go in the circle file, and these conditions will stand going forward.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, let's open the public hearing. Does the applicant have a presentation? This is Mr. Salisbury.
One of a title, I guess I'm the operator of the restaurant, so. The question was, why do we close at 11:00? I always told my kids, nothing good happens after 11:00, and we don't want, bad things happen in that restaurant, so they can go somewhere else and cause the problems, but that's the reason. We, a little bit of history, I don't know if I could just give you a bit of history. I think it's interesting to show where, I know when the word "bar" goes up, antennas go flying up, and I understand that. To show that, the opposite, our intent is not to sell more alcohol, but is to revitalize the restaurant and make it more viable. When we came in there in 2002, those of you who lived in the area prior to us remember what went on at Cannery and type of kids that came in there, and it was, I don't think we could describe probably as, probably the Newport Beach Police did not want them in our neighborhood. Anyway, we had, we were flooded with that, those people, and we did everything we could. It took us six months to get them out, so we could get a civilized people who behaved, and we didn't want that type of thing. So, I think we could have milked that thing, all those people. We didn't. We went the opposite way. I think the other thing that holds to us, we just opened El Cholo Restaurant in Corona del Mar. That was a former nightclub. We replaced a nightclub with a family neighborhood restaurant, so that's what we do. We don't, I don't, we always want mainly food. We want to build a restaurant on repeat business, and that's the type of thing we do. Now, when you hear a bar going up, you wonder why we're doing it. Today, we've been there 14 years now. Today, the restaurants are being built, they're smaller in size, they're not white tablecloth, and they, because of smaller size, you'll, the fine dining restaurants you'll find will have bars as part of the dining room, it's part of the vibe, it's a civilized vibe. As example, my wife and I, when we go somewhere, we will choose to sit at the bar. It's a little more social, you get to know the bartender, you get a little more care in the cocktails that are made for you, and I queried seven friends of mine, and they all answered the same thing. When I go up with my wife, we go to the bar. So, it's become the way that people dine now. So, it enables us to have a better vibe in the dining room, so we can compete with the restaurants that are coming out now. I know that, this sounds funny, but the restaurant, it's a little bit old, maybe, 14-years-old, we need that. When you come to the bar, you can, you can order, let me put it this way, when you go to a white tablecloth restaurant, the first thought is, I'm afraid to go in there, because if I sit down there, I'm going to have to have an appetizer, an entree, a bottle of wine, and it's a commitment financially. A lot of people now will go to a restaurant, and they'll sit at the bar, and they'll see what do you want to eat, and then sometimes you have appetizers, sometimes you slide into dinner, but it's an easy way to be in the restaurant, enjoy the vibe of the restaurant, and maybe not be committed in the episode. That basically sums it up. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has on that. We have no intent of trying to milk more alcohol out of it, as you can see, we're reducing area.
Any questions? I think it's pretty self-explanatory, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. It's a, we tend, I'm doing a good job for you. Thanks.
Thank you. Sure, come forth.
Hi, my name is Alex. I'm with Robinson Hill Architecture. We're representing Ron and Cannery. I noticed something in Jason's presentation. Jason, I'm sorry for not bringing this up to you before, but I think getting to what Commissioner Coating was saying earlier about all the different approvals we've had, our application shows the existing patio being entitled to have 26 outside seats, and in our opinion, we are bumping it up to 44. And a matter of fact, we actually started talking operationally, that the first place where people want to go is the patio. That's the preferred spot. So, what we've done to kind of address Commissioner Coating's concern, is we've reduced seating inside the main dining room. We had four tops, we went to two tops in some areas to increase the patio seating because of demand. So, right now, the way the conditions of approval are put together, it looks like we're looking for a reduction in the patio, but operationally, we're actually thinking, we are thinking we're getting an increase. So, I don't know how much freedom we have or the ability we have to change the numbers, as long as the overall does not change. We would like to maximize the patio, because that's where most people want to go, and I don't know if we can do that on a condition of approval basis, or if we have to go through the whole process again.
I think if, I'd rather clean it up now and do what you, we would prefer, so you have flexibility than having to go back again, so.
Okay.
What's the ask?
So, you guys are still authorized to do 57 seats outdoors. It doesn't impact any of the parking.
Okay.
It's a condition of approval in the resolution.
Okay.
That's still in there, and that's still carried forward.
Now, if, because right now, like you were mentioning, there's a few more than 57 on the patio, because there are fewer in the dining room, could we work through a number that you're comfortable with, that stays within the total amount of seats and intensifies the use of the patio, or increases the number of seats from 57 to a higher number in the patio? I think right now, we're right around 70? Yeah, like 75 seats right now. Right, yeah.
To meet the parking requirements, you're limited to 57 seats on the exterior, and to increase beyond that would require an amendment to the use permit for additional parking.
Can we limit the occupant load inside the restaurant to increase the occupant load on the patio? So, from 57 to 75, that's another 18 seats, whatever it is, can we reduce the interior occupant load to increase the patio occupant?
Perhaps we can incorporate some flexibility in the conditions of approval, so that we can evaluate the impacts of modifying the parking, the seating count by maintaining the parking requirements, however. What I'm hearing behind me, though, is that we want to ensure there's not triggering any building code issues as well for access.
That totally makes sense. That absolutely makes, exitting's always a concern, accessibility is always a concern. So, those are things that we'll have to address.
So, can we look at the condition of approval, and if you could redraft it to fit what he's asking for? Okay, any other public comments?
Chair Kramer and members of the Planning Commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. This item continues to be noticed pretty much as just a review of adding the 249-square-foot bar area, but as you've heard, it's a consolidation of a number of previous approvals that have been granted, and within that larger context, I tried to make a few comments. I see one of them is erroneous. I thought that there was not a opening hour specified, but I see that there is in condition number six. But one thing I found difficult to understand from this is the last, I don't know if you saw the written comments or not, there was some IT issue getting them to you over the weekend. The last one has to do with the status of the live entertainment option that they may or may not have, and I was looking on handwritten page 41, there's a history of their permitting. The original permitting from 1971 is extremely vague, but it appears in 1975, they had a permit for live entertainment, ran for two-year periods, was set to expire finally in 1997, and then the notes appear towards the top of handwritten page 41, say that in November 1997, the Planning Commission approved, allowing them to have a dance floor with amplified sound in conjunction with live entertainment, but that was denied by the City Council in December of 1997. So, it sounds like the status is that the live entertainment is not currently part of the use permit, and so I noticed in the current carryover of conditions from previous ones, there is a condition number 12, which prohibits the live entertainment in the outdoor area. And again, I may have missed something, but as far as I can tell, the conditions are, seem to be silent on whether live entertainment is allowed or not allowed currently in the interior space. And since it's not exactly noticed that that's what the subject of the hearing is tonight, I don't know if that's a proper topic or not, but it seems like another thing that should be cleared up. Thank you.
Is there some clarification there?
Yes, there is, and appreciate you bringing that up. The condition was carried over from a previous use permit, so I think it would be appropriate for us tonight to clarify that live entertainment is not permitted within the establishment unless an amendment to the use permit is approved.
Is that the applicant's understanding of your rights? Okay. All right, let's clarify that as well. Any other public comments? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the Commission. Mr. Hillgren?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. I think the Cannery does a fantastic job from the time you're greeted at the dock till the time you leave, and I think this is an appropriate change, so I'm happy to make a motion. And as it relates to the seating, before I do that, I just want to make, ask a question. Can we, for condition number 10, seating within the outdoor dining area shall be limited to a maximum of 75 seats, provided total seats do not exceed 200 and, what's the number?
276?
272, 273.
272.
They currently have 273, so you might as well keep it at 273, right?
78. 278.
278?
Going at 272.
Can I get a number between 278 and 273?
Commissioner Hillgren, because-
Four and a half?
Can I offer a suggestion?
Sure.
It does require some additional analysis to ensure we comply with the parking requirements. So, language that I had come up with is that the maximum limits to maximum of 57 seats unless a reduction in outdoor indoor seating offsets the increase subject to approval of the Community Development Director. So, that allows us to review what they're actually asking for, making sure there's not any issues related from the Building Department and access, and making sure the parking needs its own part. access, and making sure the parking meets its requirements.
I was going to add caveat to make sure that it is okay with fire codes, but I don't think there should be anything that would reduce their seating below the 273 number, because that's really the 1 or 278, whatever it is, because that's the one that drives the parking. So whether you park and sit outdoors or indoors shouldn't matter.
Do you want to identify that, the actual number, then, of 75?
Think so, right? And then they have the ability to put it either place to match what people are looking for. So if that's acceptable, my motion is, without modification, to adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit 2016-032 with, with no live entertainment as discussed.
No live entertainment outside?
I think it's throughout the premises.
Well, this-
Correct?
12 and 13 just refer to exterior.
Right, but I think the clarification was-
Nothing inside?
Correct. It's okay with the applicant?
They can always have a special use permit if they need to do something.
And wouldn't they get some parking credit for all the boats that pull up there?
I don't think so.
I would think. No mention of that, I see. All right.
I second the motion. Any further discussion? Anyone? Does everyone understand what they're voting on here? Commissioner Zahn?
I don't want to beat this up on the condition, but the way that Commissioner Holgren just drafted the condition, it seems like it's more restrictive than the way staff had drafted it, because staff was just saying it's 57, but it could be increased by decreasing the amount of seats inside. I just want them to have the ultimate flexibility, so. And are you capping it at 75? Are you, I may have misunderstood what you said.
And, and you're silent on the 75 outdoor seat. Okay, all right, I'm good then.
Yes, question for staff. Mr. Torres, can, can we do that here tonight?
I think so. If, Commissioner Wagon, if I understand the motion at this point, then it would, it would be a hybrid of what Deputy Director Wozneski said. So it would be a cap of 272 overall, but the overall outdoor seating would have to be an offset subject to review by the fire, the building, and the other departments within the city to make sure it meets code.
And the only reason why I bring it up is it will have an impact to the community, having more folks dining outside. And I just want to make sure that, is it okay that we posted what we were posting for the community, and then we're changing that up through these actions?
That would be okay. This is a recommended commission, a condition of approval by staff, and the Planning Commission does have the authority to change the recommendation.
Please vote.
I apologize. You'll have to take a hand vote.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? None. Motion carries. Congratulations. Next item is new business, item number four, code amendment for setback maps S-3A and S-3B. This is PA 2016-066. Staff?
This is the first time I, I believe, the Planning Commission has been reviewing initiation of a code amendment. Usually, these are items that you take to the City Council, because the code does allow code amendments to be, or general plan amendments to be initiated either by the Planning Commission or Council. And we've been finding that some of these more routine cleanup zoning code amendments, it would be great just to bring it to the Planning Commission, so that we can streamline the process a bit and reduce the City Council's agenda. So if it's okay with the Planning Commission for the more cleanup items that we feel are just pretty straightforward, we'll continue to bring initiations to you. And then that way, you'll have a heads up, too, as when the planning, the public hearing occurs.
All right, go ahead.
With that, I'll turn it over to Jason.
Okay, so this, this, this code amendment would affect Lido Isle, which is shown here in the aerial. It's generally north of Marina Park and south of Coast Highway. The red identifies eight properties. This code amendment would specifically affect eight properties on Lido Isle. This is a closer look at those eight properties. Essentially, this is an amendment to the setback maps. And setback maps are used for two purposes, essentially to identify where a front yard setback is located, as well as the front setback dimension. So the maps contained errors for these eight specific properties, and so we would be cleaning that up through this code amendment. That's really the purpose. There would be no change in the setback dimensions. It's just correcting them on the map. If, if you proceed with this initiation, or proceed with the code amendment, we would bring it back for a full analysis at a future Planning Commission meeting, and then there would be subsequent City Council meetings. All of those would be noticed to the public. I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
That was the most in-depth staff report I've ever seen. One slide. You're leaving, right?
Yeah.
You got, I mean, you got one, you have one foot out the door already there.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Kennedy.
First of all, how were these eight lots? I drove out there and looked around. I couldn't tell one from another, but how did these get overlooked? And has anybody built inside the setback? Are they in conflict?
No. So the first part of that is, you can see all these lots are oriented differently than the lots on their respective block. They're all kind of perpendicular to the rest in the block. So essentially, when they drew the maps, they drew the lines too far down those properties. So those, those numbers carried too far, essentially. And then, as far as the existing development, I have checked all eight properties, and they were all built correctly. It's a matter of updating the maps so that, for, for future improvements to these properties.
Have we heard from any of the owners? Have no complaints or care?
I spoke to one owner at 3:35, and she was comfortable with the proposal.
What is the setback? It looked about 18 inches. Is that, am I wrong?
Zero outline.
No, from the street, from the back of the sidewalk.
From, from Piazza Lido, it is one and a half feet.
That's right.
Eighteen inches. There you go.
Okay, never mind.
Okay. Any other questions?
So to be clear, so no one has benefited or been hurt by this, and it was just discovered administratively? So what was the nature of the discovery? Just, I mean, how did this even come up?
That's right. So somebody came to the counter with some questions about one of the addresses, and that's when we noticed the error.
So Wendy, are you here for this one, or the last matter? Okay, I'm just joking.
Cake.
You came for the cake, right? Okay, let's open up to public comment. Dr. Mosher, you're silent on this one. Okay, all right. Well, let's close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. So Brenda, what are you asking us to do?
This is just allow initiation means that you're giving staff direction to look into the amendment in further detail, and bring it back to the Planning Commission for a notice public hearing. It just indicates that there is merit behind the idea of amending the code. Today, we don't have all the answers, but we will continue our research and bring it back to you.
So there's no vote that needs to be taken?
No vote needs to be taken.
So the direction is go ahead and proceed?
That's correct. Okay, take a motion to initiate, please, and take a vote.
Okay, I'll make a motion to initiate. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dunlap, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? None. Motion carries. Next item is item number five, motion for reconsideration. Item number six, Community Development Directors' Report. Brenda?
I have nothing to add related to the city's efforts on the local coastal program. However, we are shooting for August for a hearing. We have a lengthy list of issues to, to go over, so we are still shooting for August. But for those that agree to be on the General Plan LCP Subcommittee, you will have some good work to conquer over the next six months or so, as we get suggested modifications back from the commission to change some of our regulations.
Sounds exciting.
It sounds very exciting. Also, I want to bring your attention to the tentative meeting agenda. Our next meeting is July 21st, and the first item will be discussion of the 150 Newport Center. That project, as you recall, is the car wash site, and we had a study session on that item. And the chair and I have been discussing the fact of bringing this project forward to the Planning Commission in two meetings, because of the fact that this project has some strong policy issues related to it, that the Planning Commission can discuss in the first hearing itself, go over some of the issues that might come up related to policy, the focus of the bigger picture, basically. And then following that will be another public hearing on August 4th for the same project, to actually review the project details. And it'll be the intent for the Planning Commission to have the option of taking action on August 4th. So no action on the July 21st, however, it is a notice public hearing, so you can voice your opinion related to the policies, and then action on the, on that project on August 4th. Continuing on to the July 21st meeting, there is the Appeal of La Jolla variance. That's Jason's project, but he won't be here. But he has written his good staff report.
Is that why you're leaving?
He's leaving just in time. That project hasn't modified, and so the City Council requested that, to come back to the Planning Commission and reconsider that project based upon the changes that they made. La Jolla was the variance for the retaining wall. It was the second unit, and there was a concern about the compatibility of the structure and the safety of the narrow roadway. And then lastly, will be the Planning Commission's consideration of the West Newport Mesa Streetscape Master Plan. I provide you each copies, hard copies of that plan in advance of the staff report, but it'll be the task that evening to make a recommendation to City Council at a later date. So on to August 4th, as I mentioned, we'll have the 150 Newport Center, and then a couple other use permit for a tutoring facility. AutoNation is another project on Coast Highway. And then on to August meetings, the Museum House. We are planning on having a study session on August 18th. The EIR will be released in advance of that Planning Commission meeting, so we'll be getting you copies of that to review.
Yeah, so, so is that EIR going to be released by the end of this month?
We are hoping so. We met with the EIR consultant today, and we're hoping to get a refined schedule. And yes, we're hoping to have it released by the end of the month.
I'd really like to have a deadline on this thing, because it is kind of moving slowly here. Museum House, so I think, you know, the direction from the commission is, you know, please release the EIR by the end of July.
I would agree.
Me, too. I agree with that as well. And when the schedule comes out on Wednesday, and we have it finalized, I'll be happy to share the commission what the date is.
Because then that provides, you know, the public the opportunity to look at everything, get all the comments, you know.
Right.
Yep.
I was wondering, on the next couple meetings of these bigger projects, is there a way that we can maybe start a little earlier, maybe like 5:30 instead of 6:30?
I'll, I'll talk to staff about that and canvass some of the commissioners and see how that-
That would be great, just because it goes pretty late.
Yep, understood.
So the rest of the meetings are very tentative in nature. So Commissioner Dunlap, just for your information, this is something that I distributed each of the commission meetings. They are subject to change, but does help us to kind of anticipate some of our future big projects. And that's all I have to report for tonight.
So on AutoNation, can you provide a little more detail on what's the scope of that project?
Sure. This is a project that includes the area on Mariners Mile, Coast Highway, between Mariners Point, the project right there at Dover and Coast Highway, and McDonald's. It's an entire stretch that are proposing a Porsche dealership, basically, that will include a parking structure. It has a mitigated negative declaration associated with it. So I will ask the project planner, Jim Campbell, to forward it on to the Planning Commission as soon as it's available, so you can look at it in advance and have more information about the project.
Okay. Any comments from the commission regarding the upcoming schedule?
I had a question.
Sure.
On the 150 Newport Center, next week, have they, have there any changes? Has the public commented on their draft EIR? Is that going to generate a list that, you know, conditions may change, or sizes, or?
We are continuing to go through the, the comments. The comment period has ended, and the consultant and staff is finalizing the responses to those comments. We don't anticipate them being available for the July 21st meeting. We want to make sure we have a comprehensive response to those comments. At this time, I don't see that we're making any, have not been any environmental impacts we have not already identified in the, in the document, because that's the purpose of the, the secret comments. We are continuing to review the project for compliance with the zoning code and the general plan. And this time, the applicant is not suggesting any changes.
This is, we, we spent a long time on this, and everybody made detailed comments and concerns, and they're not touching them? Is it running? Are you pushing this too fast? It's next week, for crying out loud, a week and a half, Colin.
We're continuing to have discussions with the applicant regarding some of the issues that were raised by the Planning Commission, and I think it'd be premature to be, to offer any concrete conclusions that the applicant is willing to present. I will say that staff is, is encouraging some reduction in the height to, for the, for consideration by the Planning Commission.
Okay. It seems a little quick to me.
Any other comments? Okay. Announcements, Brenda, are you finished, or? Okay.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Announcements on matters that the Planning Commission members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report. Okay, requests for excused absences. Commissioner Holgren?
I believe I will be out of town on August 4th.
Everyone check their calendar, huh?
I'm out of town on July 21st, next meeting.
August 4th, I will be in Pennsylvania.
I'll be here at both dates. So that's all that really matters, right?
Yep.
Okay. A quorum, a quorum of one. Dr. Mosher, you'll be really upset if it's just me, you know, right? Okay. Notice, though, we've always had a quorum, though, and that's at least, that's the minimal requirement. Okay, I think that's it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.